All right, call the meeting to order at 6:03 of November 5th, 2025 of the Hatfield Planning Board Meeting. I am Stephanie Slush, Chair of the Planning Board. To my right, Amy Tarr, Alternate Chair. Over at the end is Doug Finn. To my left, John Jeffress, Lee Bell, and our Assistant Planner, Bella Yeager. As always in the agenda, first item is public forum. This is an opportunity for folks who are here to speak to something that is not an agenda item but might want to bring something to our attention as a board. I think everyone here is here for an agenda item. So I will close the public forum and the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. There's three sets of minutes. I hope everyone had a chance to take a look at them. Any comments? Questions on those?
Do you have a question on the minutes for August 6? Halfway down, a sentence that starts with "The hearing continued from the June meeting concludes with..." The last phrase in that sentence, is that from the letter that was written?
The first page you're talking about?
First page.
Okay.
In a hospitable neighborhood.
Yes. Is that from the letter or is that a summary of what was said in the letter?
I guess it's a summary of what they said in the letter. Should we put a quote?
I would prefer to not summarize a statement that... That feels pretty... I mean, I understand what they said. I believe they're here and I understand that... And I understand that that was kind of the understanding, but I'd rather not memorialize.
Yeah, I would use their language that they used, the quotes for the phrasing for that last sentence. Either a quote or nothing.
Yeah, you could simply strike that last phrase from the sentence and I would be fine with that. But I don't have a problem with including a reason of some kind.
Okay. If I... Yeah, okay. You'll just strike it. If there were... Would you prefer like a quoted statement from the email as the reason or nothing?
Well, that's why I asked. If they said in their letter that they felt it was in a hospitable neighborhood, then leave it, that's fine. Otherwise, if that isn't a quote, I would recommend just striking the phrase.
Okay.
Yeah, it's sufficient to just say that they requested, you know, to withdraw their application, so.
Okay. Got it. Agreed. Anything else?
No other comments, thank you.
All right. Can I get a...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 6 with the one amendment as discussed.
You got our minutes as well? Are we just going to do one of...
Oh, do you want to do all the rest? I'm fine.
Sure. Then I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes of August 6 as...
I'm not going to be able to vote on the other two.
Oh, true, because of...
Let's stick with August 6 then.
All right. Any further discussion? Oh, I need a second.
A second.
Can I actually vote on the other two? It's just that you have to say that you have a good faith belief that everyone else, you're going with what they're saying, basically. You don't have to have been there. We've asked Andrew again.
Bring this vote, this one through, I can understand.
Whatever you'd rather. Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And then the meetings, minutes of August 20th and the October 1st?
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion.
How about a second? Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I'm abstaining from one of those, right?
Yeah, but they're bundled, so you can just... Or do what Bella said, you can say, be a sheep and agree with us.
I agree.
Just kidding. All right. And now, our first item on the agenda is to discuss with Kyle Fennell of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, update on a project he's working on with us to review our zoning bylaws and make recommendations for what we should think about prioritizing and updating our bylaws. Kyle? He's here virtually, so apologies for... Would it be helpful for the public to see anything? John said that if he shares his screen that they can see it online. I mean, like, that's public, but...
So I can share a screen and everybody will be able to see slides?
That's what... Yeah, thank you.
I will do that right now.
But Bella, I'm talking about, can you give this to them so they can... Sorry.
The slide deck, man?
Yep, sorry. Yeah, that's what I... I'm offering to give it to... If anybody on my other board members, I feel like we should offer to give to those people there if they want to see it, otherwise we can use... Okay, yeah, thanks.
I'm fine, yeah.
Okay. Do you want more? Would you like to look at our presentation? Sure.
Sure.
No, we apologize that we didn't have anything for viewing for you all. All right, we're all set, Kyle. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. Thank you all again for accommodating me, joining remotely tonight. So tonight, we're really just going to focus on a quick recap of our conversation from August where we presented a mostly complete technical review of this zoning bylaw review, our technical diagnostic. And then I'm going to just give a quick, kind of high-level discussion of our recommendations that are in the document in front of you and I'll welcome the conversation. You have the packet. I also have it digitally, so I can pull that up if we want to show any members of the audience while we're discussing. But, yeah, just quickly, again, briefly, we just want to talk about takeaways from our initial conversation, thoughts that you shared there. There were some additional elements that we tried to include in the diagnostic. There's also some pieces that we didn't put in there that I would like to discuss. And then we can go through a little bit more detail, the final recommendations that we did include, which some of those do have appendices and some references, resources included in the final product. So for the general public, just quick context, this is part of a DLTA-funded project. The town applied at the beginning of 2025 for a grant from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do the zoning diagnostic as well as other parts of actions from the Hatfield Comprehensive Plan. So this was a majority of our work that we started over the summer and we're kind of presenting the final product tonight. So we presented our first draft in August. Again, that was an initial review of our diagnostic on the zoning bylaw and we gained a lot of feedback from the planning board members. A quick summary of those key takeaways, consistency of the document, so consistency not just of format, but consistency of terminology and layout, especially accessibility, getting, reading the document, not just for a developer or someone who wants to bring a project before the planning board, but just, you know, accessibility for the general public was key concerns. There was a request and an acknowledgement of the need for real in-depth analysis of the zoning districts as they exist. Zoning districts, not just base zoning, but also the overlays and the environmental constraints to development that exist in Hatfield, noting the large amount of area that is floodplain, but also the constraints of steep slopes in the western part of town. So I'll speak to that, but just wanted to acknowledge that was a big talking point and a lot of our takeaway included that work. And then there is a note that some of the new regulations, particularly for missing topics like battery energy storage system, those may kind of be shaped by state activity, new regulations coming from the Commonwealth. So in regards to additional analysis of the zoning map, we started to do that work, particularly focusing on the areas of spot or split zoning as the board was wanting to initially was thinking of moving forward with some of those rezoning efforts. We did not deliver final maps due to the cancellation of the public hearing, but we have, you know, a list of 41 parcels that are kind of, have already been identified as potential areas to rezone. So we encourage you to continue that effort. We recognize that those are kind of inconsistencies in the zoning map that we think need to be addressed in the long term, but we also recognize that that's a process that I think warrants public participation and open discussion. So we conducted a general assessment of zoning coverage to get a better sense of how much of the town is intended for each zoning district, and this includes the overlays. So we didn't present this data in the diagnostic, but it's here in the slide deck. The base zoning coverage can be seen in the table. Again, there are eight base zoning districts. The three that really cover the majority of town, your rural residential is approximately 32% of your town is designated for rural residential. Outlying residential is almost 30% of the total area and your agriculture district is 20%. And I do want to just point out that what's interesting with this quick little summary is just to acknowledge that when you look at the use regulations for these three districts, particularly in regards to housing, there's not a lot of difference. This is something that we started to converse with the planning board back in August, but just pointing out, you know, the kind of big question of, is this list of existing zones appropriate? Are they unique and distinct enough to really warrant this number of regulations? And so I just wanted to highlight that implication based on how the zoning coverage currently plays out. So if we look at overlay districts in this top table, this is really just kind of total area. There are four official overlay districts in the zoning bylaw. The water protection district, which is dedicated to protecting public water supply sources primarily in the north and west part of town, but there's, I believe, an aquifer zone kind of in the center of town as well. That totals 13% of the total coverage of town. The mixed-use overlay, which is the smallest, it's uniquely delineated, kind of parcel by parcel, that really only adds up to approximately 120 acres, about 1% of town. The riverfront protection overlay, which is really just the riverfront along the Connecticut, it's pretty self-explanatory, that's about 6% of the town. And the floodplain district, which includes the floodplain as it lies along the Connecticut, but also includes some of the Mill River watershed, that adds up to about 27% of town. So I put it... We did total all this. I put asterisks on this total because this isn't reflective of the total acres and the percentage of town that is covered by all overlays. This is the total, the overlays as individuals. So there are instances, particularly how the floodplain overlay and the riverfront protection overlay interact. Those overlay districts really sit on top of one another almost entirely. So you have an interesting intersection of overlays. We weren't able to get into all those details in our kind of first cursory analysis, but I just wanted to point out that this total line doesn't reflect that reality. There's also interesting instance of, I believe, in the very north of town along Route 10 that there are three overlays that intersect. So you have an instance where you have a base zone with water supply protection with floodplain protection and mixed use all on top of a handful of parcels. So it creates a really interesting scenario if you were to think about how a property owner would advance a redevelopment of that parcel. So another kind of instance of why further in-depth analysis may be warranted and is actually a recommendation of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for you to consider. We did break down how these overlays relate with the base zone, so how much of each overlay district is zoned for which base use. I just want to point out that a majority of your business zone is, also has a mixed-use overlay delineation over it, 66 acres totally, or in total. What's interesting is that the riverfront protection overlay is entirely zoned for agricultural use. The water protection overlay is also primarily zoned for business use and town center. And then you also have the floodplain, which again is primarily zoned for agriculture and additionally rural residential. So just wanted to point out some of these interesting kind of coverage and patterns of how your base zones relate to the total percentage of land area in town and then how your overlays kind of interact with those. In terms of the final recommendations for the town, based on our initial diagnostic of the zoning bylaw, we break these recommendations into two groups. We call them short-term priorities and then longer-term priorities. With the short-term priorities, we're assuming that these are actions that the planning board can take without an extensive community engagement process. Primarily, this is for the purpose of really modernizing the document, making it more accessible, addressing some of those formatting errors that occur over time with cross-references being lost or provisions being renumbered or shifted, those types of items. Longer-term priorities are the actions that may require longer-term discussions, right, where you want to engage with the public to do real planning, thinking about regulations and development patterns that residents are open to or the town think would be appropriate in the long term. So we have five short-term priorities that really focus on enhancing the table of uses and the definitions defining all terms that are identified. Expanding the use of visual aids and cross-references, so we discussed that a little bit, not just depending on the table of use, but considering diagrams to help convey concepts such as the measuring of frontage or lot coverage of a building or impervious cover. Reorganizing and reformatting the zoning bylaw comprehensively is a short-term priority. It's not an easy task, to say the least, but I think it's identified and recognized by the planning board in our first conversation that there's just too many sections that are kind of in an illogical order and a reorganization is kind of a necessary step to get all of the relevant regulations and procedures and definitions in their proper place. We include an appendix A, which is a very high-level organization of the bylaw, thinking about how you could start grouping those provisions together. Additionally, we have recommending revise and update to outdated provisions. There was a list of those presented in the diagnostic and one that we identified from conversation with the planning board back in August was that the provisions for home occupations actually exist entirely in the definition section with one line in the table of use. It's a rather uncommon and...
Yeah.
...impractical placement of a regulation. So that's just one example that we really wanted to highlight because it is so unique and we've added as appendix B, a model home occupations bylaw or home-based business or home-based occupation bylaw, just as an example of you bring what is existing from the definitions into a more proper regulatory format and then put it in as a special regulation. But there is a list of incomplete or outdated provisions that begins on page 15 of the diagnostic that also needs to be revised. And then we kept in the topic of considering adopting a battery energy storage system bylaw. We know that it's a high priority for the town, given kind of actions that are happening at the state level and because there's a need to modernize the solar installation provisions. At this time, we decided not to include the model that's coming from the state as the regulations are not yet finalized. I don't know if the public comment period on the regulations will impact the models, but at this point, I don't have full confidence that the models are currently, as they are currently available, the best starting place. Happy to offer that. If the planning board hasn't had a chance to review those, I can send along that link. In terms of the longer-term priorities, just three at this point that really focus more on kind of looking at the additional topics that may be of interest to the planning board and/or the community more broadly. We've included the Smart Growth Community Checklist as appendix C. This comes from the Pioneer Valley's Planning Commission's last regional plan. A lot of these that the town was interested in and investigating back in the late 2000s, they continue to be discussed. They're also included in many of the potential actions that come out of the Hatfield 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So I also encourage everyone to remind yourselves and review earlier in the diagnostic, we call out all those 22 actions. Many of them have zoning topics to discuss, such as 40R smart growth or 40Y starter homes, village center zoning, design standards and the like. Generally, we also recommend in the long term, addressing exclusionary zoning. This can be done by promoting housing diversity, particularly when it comes to housing types that are permitted uses by right. That's the key topic there is exploring areas of town that can permit more than just a single-family home by right, removing the developmental hurdles for property owners and folks that are wanting to bring an increase of housing production to town. And then in terms of adopting regulations that are missing topics, we had a short list of missing topics identified and based on feedback, we decided to provide two as appendices, a model on short-term rentals. That's actually more of a general bylaw, but it's something that we think would be worthwhile to consider, particularly as they become more and more common and they have kind of an undue impact on not just housing availability, but also tax assessments, their implications there. And then we also include a model bylaw as appendix E for a mixed-use village center. So I know that's something that's been discussed. I think it's similar to the mixed-use overlay, the mixed-use development provisions, but this is more of kind of a cohesive attempt to think of mixed use as more village centers and may provide additional provisions for you to consider. So that's a quick overview of kind of what we've taken from that initial draft and that conversation in August, how we've tried to rectify or address some of those additional concerns or topics, and then some of the resources that we have available for you right now at this time. But of course, we're happy to continue with this conversation and support the town as you carry on these recommendations into future action. So at this point, I welcome conversation, questions. I'm happy to bring up sections of the diagnostic if you want to review anything more in-depth or if you want to look at any of the appendices and share that with the audience, I'm happy to do so.
I want to see your appendices.
I'd like to see the whole document, yeah. I do have a quick question. We talked about battery energy storage system, potential addition of a bylaw. You mentioned that there's a model bylaws that are being considered at the state level. I understand that there's also model bylaws being considered for solar that reflect the new regulations relative to that. Is your understanding that neither model is final at this point?
It's unclear to me. The last I saw the models, they were released at the time of public comment on the regulations. And I'm, given the amount of feedback that I heard from our member communities and the feedback that PVPC provided, I'm curious and hesitant to share the models as they currently exist, partly in hope that they will be kind of addressed and adjusted due to the feedback because it's just, it's a lot to... The current regulations take a lot of decision-making away from local boards and so we just weren't ready to put those state models in there at this time. I'm happy to send those along if you'd like to see them.
A follow-up question to that. Can the town of Hatfield put a moratorium on any development of new battery energy storage system or solar, large-scale solar? And by large, I mean more than 35 kilowatt-hour arrays, unless roof-mounted. Can we put a moratorium on that to give us a year to really develop good, strong bylaws?
That's a fair question. I believe Blanford, the community of Blanford, is currently weighing this option. My initial takeaway is going to be that a moratorium is not going to hold up to Attorney General scrutiny. I believe it violates Mass General Law, Chapter 48, because solar is now, in some degree, protected and it's now, you know, a large-scale, say a large-scale of 35 megawatts, right? That falls into a category of clean energy production that would take a development like that before the Energy Siding and Permitting Board, it's a state entity, a new state entity. So I just don't know. I couldn't recommend that course of ag... I just don't know. I, I couldn't recommend that course of action. Some communities are, are pursuing it, but I, at this time, I, I really don't know and I, I, I tend to be pessimistic.
I would suggest that we need to prioritize developing a battery energy storage system bylaw and have it before town meeting this coming spring. I don't think we can afford to wait. If we can't put a moratorium on it, I think we need to take whatever model is available. The best guidance we can get, develop something locally to at least give us some kind of oversight. Otherwise, right now we have nothing, which means that they just lean in on the state and they can build what they want. I am not afraid of battery energy storage. I think it can be done very well, and I think it'd be a fantastic industrial, non-residential taxable property. And I don't think there's any reason to be scared of it. But there's a lot of local reviews that we want to make sure we do specifically, you know, proximity to groundwater sources, ability of fire department to respond to and manage an incident at such a facility. There are a number of things that we do want to make sure we have a good handle on. And the only way we can do that is through a bylaw. So I think we're going to need to look at something. We're going to need to look at the model bylaw as it stands.
And other communities are all also wrestling with this too. It's the same thing like when the marijuana, you know, became legalized and we had to like put something into our bylaws. We're all kind of making it up as we go. This is new technology that is being developed and implemented and yeah.
Right.
State mandates in some way.
Right. And the, the, the complicating factor is also that battery energy storage, when combined with a solar array, is a way to get more capacity connected to a grid that is close to reaching its limit than currently would be permitted. Right now, for example, I don't know the exact numbers, but I would suspect that, say, a brand-new 10-megawatt solar array that covers 30 acres of land would not get an interconnection permit from ever source because they don't have the grid capacity to carry 10 megawatts of power from any given location. Combine that with a battery energy storage system, then it actually reduces the load on the grid. The energy is stored onsite and released in smaller amounts to the grid on a 24-hour basis. And, you know, and that's how they're supposed to work. But without any kind of oversight, without any kind of regulation in place, some facility like that goes before the energy setting committee at the state level and gets built and we have no say in it.
Right.
So I think there's some urgency there and we do have to look at that.
Yeah, we should work on that for May.
Yeah, if possible. Even if it's imperfect, even if we have to revise it.
It's at least a start.
Yeah, we need something.
Bella, I'll, I'll make sure to send those over directly to Bella and she can circulate.
Similarly, with all the appendices referenced, I think it'd be good for us to sit with this and do our homework on this and continue a conversation at our next meeting about the, the outcomes of all of this.
I know personally, I need to look at all the different appendices that we're discussing here in length and have the slightest clue what we're talking about.
Also, the, some of the short-term priorities do not like seem like they might, they might seem like short-term in some respects, but like, what are we talking about here? Like a couple of years, but in the sense, I guess that Kyle was saying that it's, it's, I don't know if short-term is the only way to describe it, but you were saying that possibly it doesn't require as much community. Yeah, like I guess, but like I, I see that in like the reorganizing and reformatting, but like something like enhancing the table of use. There are going to be lots of feelings about that, I feel like potentially.
We've already been warned.
Yep. And even something as simple as like our home occupation, also known as home-based business bylaw, like is very small, doesn't really cover much. I can foresee if we were to like make it more legitimate or whatever and put it in our bylaws, that would be seen as like making it harder or something. I don't know. But anyway, I just like foresee.
Having been a small business owner in town, I think that it would give more direction than be, than be a problem. I, I think that there, there are probably small businesses like mine was, that it would be great to see some regulations or non-regulations or, you know, some type of authority that would say, this is okay, this is not okay, you know?
Big, yeah. And I agree with you, just like I agree that anything that we would propose would be for the betterment of the businesses in the town and the community, but the political piece of bringing it to town meeting.
Absolutely. We already found that out.
Yes, exactly.
You know?
You know? So I just would want to like, yes, I would like to move all, I'll move on these and.
So that, yeah, that'd be only my final request is that we get a access to the full documentary.
Review them for next meeting.
Yes.
And then Kyle, if we like review these and like maybe we have more questions for you, having someone, you know, you or someone from your team coming to that meeting if we have further questions, if that's all right.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, we're happy to join. At the December meeting, feel free to either reach out to me directly or, or send questions through Bella. And we can address any concerns or further questions you may have. Additionally, if, if there's any of the recommendations that you think you are looking for additional resources, let us know. We, we do have plenty of things to, to pull, draw upon and references to share. I'm still sharing my screen. But yeah, we're, we're happy to, to come back in December. We still have section of the budget to work with the town. You know, this project is really for implementing some key strategies from Hatfield 2040. This was a big one. And you're correct, Stephanie, you know, these, these short-term recommendations aren't necessarily easy things to do. But the thinking there is that it's more logical to get those things done in the, in the near term. And particularly in, in terms of reformatting and kind of restructuring the document so that those bigger additions can be appropriately included and integrated when they pass town meeting.
Do a, one question. It's made by, might be too much detail. In your review of those zoning bylaw in general, this is a question about the, about the text really. Did you find or did your crew find a significant amount of repeated or closely similar language, repeated multiple times throughout the document? And is there a way that we can leverage that and get more efficiency out of the document? I don't know if I'm explaining myself well enough.
Can you, can you elaborate on that second piece, the gaining efficiency?
So in other words, by efficiency, I mean simplicity. You mentioned that certain uses such as residential uses are similar in a lot of the zones. If there's a way that we can just say, you know, use that language and just say residential uses are allowed in all of these places and then put all the associated language with that in one section. That's just one poor example perhaps, but.
Yeah. So there are instances of kind of more, more like redundancies or repetitive repetitions. Particularly given that a lot of, I think I think it's probably more often occurs with some of the procedure that is associated with various special uses or, or, you know, special regulations. So I think that's, that's where it's most likely occurred. I can't off the top of my head, point to any particular example. And I don't know if we get too much in-depth in regards to that, but I'm happy to circle back and do another pass and just kind of give some examples in the document if that's helpful.
That's okay. It'll come out in the wash. No problem.
Okay. But, but I think you are right. That's Doug, right? Forgive me. I don't, I can't see your placards in your name tag.
We have neither.
But, but you're right. I think that was something I believe we discussed in August. There, there are opportunities to streamline the document itself by addressing some of those repetitive provisions, those clauses that just get plugged in. It, it often happens, you know, over time, particularly when you build zoning bylaw off of different models, you know, every provision has a severability clause or a, you know, an authority provision and, you know, things just start getting kind of clunky and repetitive. So I think a reformatting, you know, a, a comprehensive effort like that, you, you'd start to identify all those repetitions and redundancies and you can start to remove those. And then, you know, examples of, of streamlining the, the procedural administrative provisions. I believe you brought this up in August, you know, there, there is a requirement to accurately and reference the appropriate governing general laws. And then you can simply from there, you know, direct folks to the appropriate rules and regulations adopted by the planning board. You know, save space in the zoning bylaw, avoid taking things to annual town meeting and bring it into either a, an example would be like a subdivision rules and regulations or even the planning board rules and regulations that the planning board has a little bit more flexibility in terms of addressing administrative and procedural issues as they may occur. You don't have to wait until annual or special town meeting and then go through the public hearing. Go beyond a public hearing process, you know, rules and regulations at the planning board level is, is just a public hearing to, to rectify any issues that arise.
And that was actually something Bella and I went to the citizen planning training collaborative half-day session in Greenfield last month. And one of the ones we went to was around site plan review and it was that, that basically we're recommending we take all the procedural elements out of the zoning bylaw so that we can change them like, so it doesn't say like, why you need eight copies of this thing or we follow this step one, two, three, four, like we can take them out and we can change them when we need to and not have to bring them to town meeting.
Agreed.
Right. And I think it also allows the planning board to prevent inconsistencies, particularly with site plan approval because it isn't codified in Mass General law. It's really up to the local boards and authorities to, to kind of hold themselves to consistent standard. So taking those elements out of the zoning bylaw allows you to be more consistent and conduct yourselves in a more fair and consistent manner. It, it helps kind of just do business locally with the board and, and build more positive relationships with applicants and developers.
Yeah. And it makes it easier for the public too, when you say like, okay, you don't need to read these 70 pages. Like this is the steps. It's this two-page thing. Like, yeah, it's, you can make it more easy to read and update it and.
And those regulations that can easily be colossally intimidating to a residential person trying to figure out what he can and can't do or what the zone, the zone isn't. And, and I think if we were to simplify it so that everybody in town that wanted to look at it would understand it, would be a huge benefit to the general public. You know, so.
Absolutely.
We're working on putting together files of both internal instructions for our team here and also external facing instructions so that we can just hand something out when people come in. And it's like, this is the process for site plan review. You know, even if it's like a lot of repeated documents between the three types of applications, just having it all in one place, you can hand it out to people instead of referring them to like 12 places in the.
And it is daunting when you tell somebody, well, it's in, it's in the, the rules and regulations. Just go read them and you'll understand. You know, there might be 42 places that you gotta read before you can understand what applies to you. And, and that's something I think we need to eliminate at all possible for some type of land use in this town. You know, let's make it easier for people to understand what they can do as opposed to fight with them afterwards, saying, well, you can't really do that. And that document should let people know explicitly what they can and can't do relative to where they are.
Any further questions or comments for Kyle? Thank you. I, I can imagine this work is, could be kind of boring. So I appreciate, I appreciate you digging in and yeah, look forward to looking at.
I appreciate the smiles and a little bit of levity. It, it is, it can be tedious work, but we understand that it's, it's really essential to helping our communities not only operate more efficiently, effectively and consistently, but you know, open up those opportunities for growth and development in a way that you, as, you know, community members and local officials really see is, is appropriate and necessary. So we're happy to be of service. Again, I'll send some additional resources to Bella to circ, circulate, particularly on those, those hot topics. And I will put the first Wednesday of December on my calendar for if not me, another member of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to be in attendance so that we can take any final feedback. But again, we appreciate the town in this project. We appreciate advancing the actions from the comprehensive plan and hope to continue being of service.
Thank you, Kyle. Yeah. And it'll be our board's homework to read up on all the good work that your team did. So we can talk about, because next, next, I mean, like for all intents and purposes, December is really when we should be thinking about like, what are we going to be putting on the spring town warrant? If we need to put something on there, because there's the timeline of the public hearings and things like that. So we could start thinking about that in the next couple of meetings. That would be great. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you all. Bella, I'll be in touch and we'll talk soon. Thanks.
Right. John, do I, it would help if I ended this, right? Okay. And then do I need to keep sharing my screen or no? Those are things you want to show us? I just have a bunch of notes I want to look at and I was looking to not continue to share. I just want to note that for folks here, the, for the site plan review, we're going to start, wait till seven before we start that. Because that was what's in the notice. So thank you. Oh, okay. No longer sharing. What do I do? Do you want us to, I can turn this off. Okay. I would rather not, but it doesn't. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Although, those are distracting probably. Is it still shared for, on John's purposes? No, I don't think so. Okay. Next thing is the AG response?
Yes.
Okay.
That is also in our packets. It's in relation to the at town meeting this past in May, we updated the ADU bylaw to put it, try, you know, to attempt to put into compliance with the state's updated guidance and law that they, that went into effect in February of the, earlier this year. And so, and again, another example of like us trying to update our bylaws to stay in compliance with state mandates. And so in doing so, we worked with the town council to update. And then we, and it takes certain amount of time for the AG, the Attorney General's Office reviews all of the town meeting warrants that we approve. And, and it says like, yep, this is good or no, this is not. And so we get heard back that there's, they think there are some issues with what we passed at town meeting. So.
Basically, Kyle Fennell told me that this is, it's been happening to a lot of towns, specifically this parking space thing because of the proximity to bus stations and the wording was, everyone's having the same issues. But our particular issue that they had a problem with was the phrasing, at least one parking space, which is kind of funny because the AG thinks that it sounds like we're requiring more than one parking space. So our attorney wrote to them and said, literally, we're not requiring more than one parking space. We're requiring at least one. It gives people the option to have more than one. It doesn't insinuate that you can't have more than one, but.
No response.
Well, they sent it the same day. So. But.
Before we go further, does the current version of the bylaw that was reviewed and passed by town meeting last May, does it include the exception for ADUs that are located within a half mile of a transit station? Did we put that in our language?
I don't think, well, that wasn't the thing that they had the issue with.
Really?
Let me double check. The thing that they wrote, that, is the at least thing clear though? Yes. Okay. So that's the only portion that the attorney pushed back on so far. I think he did not push back on the element about proximity to stops. So I think that it's not in there.
Interesting.
Oh, so it's not in there?
It's not in there. Because I think he went with that.
That's an easy enough thing to add. Just this requirement shall not apply to any protected use ADU located within.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. And then the definition of what this R is just in the definition section of MGL.
Yeah, and you would just need to point to that, right? Exactly.
And then the second point, the attorney did not push back on, I think what we're waiting for is basically suggested language to revise what we have, but you will have, you have the letter from.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's on page six at the top. The issue was basically that we are using site plan review to take a look at protected use ADUs that don't meet the all of the basic requirements of section 3.4.4C, which is stuff like dimensional requirements and access by fire and the ADU being behind the principal dwelling and the basic essential things that we're allowed to regulate by the state. We wrote in that if it doesn't, for some reason, meet all of those requirements, the building inspector can send it to planning for site plan review and we can take a look and consider its impact. The issue that they had was that site plan review is supposed to basically deliver a determination, which can't be, you have to have stated objective criteria for making that determination. And the last line here where we say we will not impose an unreasonable harm to an anya butter, they were saying that we don't have stated objective means of determining what unreasonable is. So.
Should be a grid. This is the issue. I should strike this whole place.
Yeah.
Well, they only struck the part that's bolded and under.
Just the bold part, yeah. Everything else is perfectly kosher. But what's interesting is when you get down to paragraph five, the same page, where it says towns are prohibited from opposing dimensional requirements more restrictive than the principal dwelling.
Correct.
So I mean, it's saying we can't even say smaller than principal dwelling.
No, the dimensional requirements refer to things like setbacks.
Not dimensionals, the ADU.
And not not the location of the, we can say the ADU needs to be set further back on the lot than the principal dwelling. We could say that, but we can't say that.
You're prohibited for being more restrictive than the state.
What's that?
You're prohibited from being more restricted than the state.
Right. I don't think that is more restricted than the state. Yeah, I think.
I I always assumed that dimensional requirements are things like, yeah, setbacks.
Yeah.
Front, side lot setbacks, that kind of thing.
So those are the only two issues that they had with it. Everything else in the bylaw has been accepted, so we can proceed.
Not bad.
As if it's been accepted. And then.
Bulk and height right here, John.
I wouldn't want to speculate, but.
We're talking about dimensional standards is applied across the whole thing. It says bulk and height, which is talking about the building. Not just the distance from the neighbor's driveway.
Page six.
It says bulk and height.
Six or five, page six.
Thinking this is saying, your ADU could be the same size. You could be the same size as the principal. States are where we are prohibited from restricting.
That's only for protected use ADUs, which are automatically limited to absolutely no more than 900 square feet. That being said, I'm thinking of some of the properties up here where they have a big front yard, you know, lots of room between the the road and the house. If they want to put an ADU in their front yard, we may not be able to stop them, to stop them or to say.
Applicable. Here's the list, right?
Yeah.
And the question is then, how much neighbor input would prevent somebody from doing that? And how much neighbor input would not prevent them from doing such a thing?
For a protected use ADU, neighbor input doesn't come into play.
The site plan review part allows for like some conversation around some of that.
We still can't. And I honestly thought that we had it covered by saying, shall conduct the site plan review and approve. That we're required to approve it. But then we added that sentence that.
Allows for subjectivity.
Subjectivity. So, yeah, so I get that. Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing too, like I was wondering also, like what if there's already a, the principal dwelling is already so small that it is less, is 900 square feet or less? Can that qualify as the ADU?
Absolutely. Yeah, I see no problem with that. Yeah. And and I personally don't have a problem with that. Someone has a tiny house on a big piece of land and they want to build a larger house.
Accomplishes the same.
There you go. Absolutely. Yeah.
The intent is there. So, yeah, ultimately, good news. They didn't have any big issues. I think both of those were comfortable with. I think the at least thing, I wouldn't want to speculate, but I think our attorney made a pretty good argument for the at least issue.
Yeah. And so if anything, we would just need to strike this line.
Yeah.
Well, that struck. It's automatically.
Oh, it's already struck, so we don't have to bring anything back to town.
Strikes it, it's out.
Right. So we don't need to go back to town meeting. Okay.
Still gonna fight over at least, which I like.
Yeah, it's a good letter. I don't know if he's.
It's just about word definition.
Someone wants to go to court over us for the at least. That just seems kind of silly. Anyway.
Yeah. Cool. All right. Perfect timing.
Wow. Thank you, Bella. And then we'll have updates. Any other further updates from you after?
After, yes.
All right, everybody. Hello, it is 6:59. We are going to start talking about the neck, the site plan review that our process, this is not like a public hearing where we have to follow a lot of mass general law related things. This is more around, we have flexibility on how we have site plan reviews, but part of that is notifying a butter. So butters have been notified with the following. I'm like waiting till it's seven. It's not seven yet, 6:59. They've been notified with updates. There's proposed updates to what was approved for the, what is now being called the Hatfield Rally House on West Street. It's now 7 o'clock. And I will read the notice that went to the butters from Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, the zoning act. And as a butter to parcel number 211-12-0. You are being notified that there will be a site plan review amendment meeting by the Hatfield Planning Board to discuss the impacts of a proposed gravel overflow parking lot on the site of the Hatfield, the Rally House Pickleball and Tennis Facility on November 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. This will include the review of an amended stormwater management plan. Plans of the proposed overflow lot are available to view at the town clerk's office at Memorial Town Hall on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays from 9:00 to 4:30. We there were some questions and we kind of went back and forth to whether this would be have to be an amendment to the site plan review. And we ultimately decided that it was considering the, as mentioned, stormwater plan and the additional pretty like significant additions in parking. So with that, I'll hand it over.
Design group here on behalf of Pat and Ashley and the crew at the Hatfield Rally House.
Yeah, if you want to sit in there so you could speak.
As you mentioned in your discussion there, this, we're here for you tonight to request an amendment to what was the approved site plan. If you recall, it was a large tennis facility, pickleball facility. There is a parking lot in front of the building with an entrance and exit on the north and south side, and then an additional formal parking area up closer to the building behind the central building garage along the West Street. The plan that was included with the site plan application originally or that approved was what you're looking at here. What we're talking about is really just trying to formalize an overflow area for those, you know, periods where they may have, you know, larger, a need for larger capacity in the lot. This parking lot is surrounded by curbs, so there's nowhere on site that other, you know, that if if a lot is full, there's nowhere else to park on the site. And it was really, you know, there was, so we lowered a portion of the curb in this area to allow access to this portion of the field. This is going to remain, you know, largely undeveloped as as it is or was. And rather than just leave that as a dirt, you know, or grass lot, the the feeling that, the feeling was that to just make that a little bit more stable, a little bit more formalized with a gravel surface was a little more appropriate. So that's what's proposed there. The grading, all of the other, you know, components of the site plan that was approved haven't changed. The use is exactly the same. That, you know, there were questions about traffic impacts, but the traffic is based on the square footage of the building and the courts inside. So none of those, you know, figures or numbers change, none of those estimates change. All the planting that was proposed is still originally included. And so from a stormwater perspective, you know, these, I don't know whether you can see them from there, but this sort of highlights where the various stormwater flows go now. You know, the back portion of the building largely is collected in this detention basin. It is surface flow. There's a channel and a detention basin in the back. The front portion, most of the stormwater management in the front is handled via a rain garden up along West Street and then through the use of the porous asphalt. And so this gravel area has has always been intended to continue to drain to to the west. It was just a slight, you know, modification of the, you know, one of the contours there, but all that will, you know, is all at grade essentially. We did provide a memo with the amendment request just speaking to, you know, stormwater flows coming off that. But essentially, you know, the summary is that even in the 100-year storm, we don't get beyond a cubic foot per second in terms of flow. All of that infiltrates, given the sandy soils within, you know, 250 feet, I forget, from just given the infiltration rates and the the capacity of that soil to take that, you know, that a little bit of additional runoff that would get generated from the gravel. It's not a big increase from what would have been grass normally. So it's just a slight, slight curve number change. But otherwise, every, all the other components of the of the plan and and conditions we would expect would would still exist.
So I have a question. Are you already determining that you need overflow parking?
So we're lucky enough to have already have 300 members.
For the record, too.
Oh, yeah, Pat Roach, one of the owners. And we already have more members have signed up for us before we opened than anticipated. We plan to have a party for our founding members. And we realized, wow, we have them all here on the same day. We're going to need some extra spaces. So this wouldn't be typical for a normal day when we're operating just.
Yeah, we wouldn't need it.
So this would maybe for a special events four or five times a year, I would guess that we would have to access the lot.
Or if you have, do you have tournaments or things like that? That could be more. Yeah. I'm just, yeah, I guess my question is like, why wasn't this factored into the original plan? Or like, why? Yeah.
So the original plan was based on like, how many people would be in the building at once using all the courts? And this special event has kind of prompted us to think, all right, well, we're gonna have more people. These people will be coming in and gathering and checking all the different amenities of the place out. And we'll have people cycling in and out to do activities on the courts. So it would be more people than would normally.
I think it was kind of an oversight.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we haven't done this before. And, you know, we've gotten some good advice from people who have done it before, but still, there's so many things that have come up that we just didn't anticipate.
And what's the present capacity for parking?
Oh, 70 spots.
I think we're close to 70 cars, 65, 70 cars, somewhere in that range.
And this this facility, this addition would create how many more spaces about?
There's room for 40 cars.
Okay.
60 by 130, roughly.
Yeah, that's a big increase, which is part of the reason why we wanted you to come to do this amendment.
Instead of just telling them to park over there.
Yeah, I think I think part of the issue too is that if there was a more more attainable overflow area, if the lot wasn't curbed, for example, and they could just pull off the pull off the parking lot and into the field and use that, you know, moored part of the field periodically. You know, that would certainly, but given that that we're all curbed and, you know, there's no other access to to, you know, an overflow spot. Again, just prompted the the need to, you know, think about that a little bit harder and at least try to formalize some area that could be, you know, reserved for that kind of use.
The building is concrete floor, essentially, underneath everything. So you're not limited in terms of weight. Building capacity then would be limited by exits, by fire code. Is that correct?
There's a building code capacity, I'm sure. Yeah, I don't know what that is, but I think, you know, I can speak more, but I think largely the capacity is going to be driven by the number of courts or players that can play at any one time.
Well, that's the operational expectation, talking about the building capacity.
Yeah, I don't know what the what building code capacity is.
All right. I appreciate the fact that you included stormwater, a stern water analysis, stormwater study, study. I'm not a an expert in that. I can't speak to that. Has any anybody from the conservation commission looked at this?
Looked it over. I mean, I took it to them, but it's also just like, it's just three different projections of different levels of storm, basically, and comparing runoff between the grass area that would exist and then the proposed gravel area and showing like how much volume change there is.
Okay.
And it's very small.
Okay.
And part of the reason why you're keeping it gravel as opposed to fully paving it in that regard too.
Much more pervious.
Yes.
I'm assuming, sorry, I didn't mean to cut somebody off. I'm sorry.
We we require an amendment for 10,000 new square feet of impervious surface. And this is widely thought of as semi-pervious. So I think this is already, they're already, you know. It's not quite at the trigger, I think, that we would normally require, but it's good to review.
I also want to acknowledge that there are members from the public here. And so I do want the opportunity to like, any comments from the public if they would like to on what is the amendment is? Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you. You could come up to the microphone just for those. The thing that I am thinking about too is I believe there's, it doesn't mention on here, but the house near there and you're the extra part. Yep, so.
Ed Malinowski, I think you know me. I guess my first question is, we've had very little rain lately, but there's been a lake at the north end of the building for two weeks. What's going to happen with that water?
I mean, I think largely the, I mean, the site really just needs to be stabilized and vegetation needs to get growing. And that's the big.
Standing water, a foot deep. Somebody ought to go by and look. I see it every minute of every day. Looks like it could be skateable or fishable. That's a lot of water.
Yeah, I mean, it was just hydroseated.
It's underwater, yeah, yeah, at this point. It's been that way for a while. You know, there's an old farm saying about having 10 pounds of crap in a five-pound bag. We're getting close to that right now. I'm tired of picking up trash coming across the street. Has nothing to do with this. But the more parking, the more people, the more trash. Try to be a nice neighbor so far, but I'm kind of stretched to the limit at this point. That's it.
Thank you.
John Wilks, 277 West Street, North Hatfield. I just have one question. All this new, you know, gravel parking stuff, how will that impact that phase two possibly of the property?
I had the same question because the original plan had.
Outside courts. I think that's one of the occurrences we had. You know, my wife was here the last time. We we talked about the traffic. The traffic been construction traffic is crazy, but we understand that. But, you know, with the additional parking and are, will there be new courts put in there at some point with, and still accommodate the five, four, five vents every year? We have the overflow parking for a tournament and everything like that. So we would like to see no outside, you know, the puck, puck, puck thing, you know, at this point. I think they've done a good job building the building, you know, they've they, you know, they put their money in it. And one of the things I did find out, I believe your franchise, I didn't know that. Is that true?
No, 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 no.
No? Because on your website or Facebook, it said, you know, Rally House, and then it went into a dozen different rallies, houses across the country. And I just thought probably you were a franchise. Okay, this is. Okay, this is just...
Yeah, I would actually like the applicant to address the potential phase two outdoor courts question. I think that's fair question to ask.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a good question. At this point, we have just been focused on getting the indoor courts done. That's our big priority. And we haven't thought much beyond, we know that we're permitted to do them. We would have to go back to Jeff and see, you know, looking at the old one that he showed before, obviously, there's going to be some impact. So we would have to reassess where new courts, if they're going to come in, would go.
I do not recall the original plan that we looked at. I know there was a version of the plan that showed four, five, six outdoor courts. I do not recall that they were proposed or being considered at that time. And that if outdoor courts were supposed to be planned, that the applicant would come back to this, to this board for a review, a second phase.
I thought we went, I remember, I thought we agreed saying like, sure, let's approve it as is, I thought.
I think that that's what happened. It was approved as is.
You said phase one and two, we're going to vote it together. That's what you did.
Yep. So then I'm, I'm a little confused why that didn't show up on this plan then? Because does this all, is that what you're saying?
I think it would be...
You'd have to come, you'd have to come back again for a new site plan or view amendment if you're going to do outdoor courts. So that's, there'll be another notification.
If you didn't do it the first time, you've been all right. You know, it's fair to fair. We want to be good neighbors too, you know. And, you know, hopefully they have good success. You know, we don't, we hope they're not here for three years and we're looking at another business moving into their facility. But, you know, it could, it's better than having a concrete plant. So.
Do you know off the top of your head, rough estimate of the impervious surface coverage on the lot as a percentage?
Uh...
It's a wild out of the way question, but...
I don't. If I had to guess, I would say we're in the 15 to 20% range.
Okay, thanks.
And I also see like the septic, it looks like too, like that's, that's also part there. So yeah, you'd be kind of...
That's been installed.
Yeah. And you'd be, I imagine courts wouldn't be...
You can't.
On top of... Right, exactly. So there would be limitations to what the size of that could be.
Was this the septic over here?
Yeah.
Yes.
At this point, doing the inside, like I, I can't even think about that. Like, no.
Fair, okay.
The only other thought I had about this is I'm looking at the parking. I assume there's a center, the, the parking area as proposed, based on how it's, how you approach it from the main driveway, it comes into that south center boundary of that parking area. So it implies that there's going to be a, a travel lane down the center, traveling north-south with parking spaces facing outward, which means you're going to have some cars coming down there into that parking area and then turning and facing headlights out to the street. So to me, that, my thought is, there needs to be some visual screening. As well know, November, December, January, February, it's dark at 4:30. I assume you've got hours after 4:30 at night. And you're going to want to encourage people to be there in the afternoon, evening, what have you. We want to make sure that headlights aren't shining into the neighbor's house or shining across the highway, across the road. So...
Well, could that be accommodated by, well, not just screening, that the drive for people to come into that area be on the roadside, and then there'd be two sets of parking lines towards the back of the property so that no one's ever facing the street? Follow what I mean?
Yeah, I follow what you mean.
You know, and that seems to, would possibly eliminate lights, car lights shining across the street into people's residences.
Accommodating it by a one-way loop through the parking lot that...
Right.
Comes in south to north, close to the road, U-turns at the north side, and then goes down roughly through the middle.
Right.
So the only way to get into a parking spot, like you said, is to pull in facing west to any given parking spot. And then you pull out and continue around the loop. That's...
I'm with you about 90%. I think I'd need to draw it just to see.
Right. I, I think it would wind up with a larger east to west dimension on the parking area, which I don't really care one way or the other if that's the case.
Yeah.
That would solve it. I was just thinking about...
Screening vegetation may be less complicated.
Rose, the screening vegetation would also solve the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the road, yeah, on the road, front edge side.
Just on the roadside.
Just to, for, yeah, if that's, would be acceptable.
So yeah, we can certainly look at just the way to, you know, have parking to the car and all facing to the west. And if that doesn't seem like it's a very feasible option, we can propose some screening along that edge.
Mechanically building the parking lot, you're going to take up the top soil anyways and replace it with a compactable gravel, I'm sure, probably with, you know, coarser stone below and then the top layer compactable gravel. So take that top soil, create a berm on the east side, on the roadside, mulch it, top it with some two-by, two-foot tall arborvitae staggered every five feet. In three years, they'll be 15 feet tall and fully screen the area.
As long as it doesn't mess with your slopes too much. Yeah. Yeah, I definitely think that there should, for the, because I think the house, isn't the house like right across from that where the proposed gravel is?
It's pretty close, I think.
The driveway and the home. Yeah, if we could put some screening there, I think that would just be, that would be helpful.
With that understanding, I have no problem approving this.
I'm gonna say, I'm of the same mind.
And I'm also just confirming there's no, there's going to be no lighting or like streetlights or something in that gravel area also.
Can you talk about that? Any parking lot lighting?
I mean, not beyond what's already proposed.
So you're not going to add new lighting in that parking area? It'll stay dark at night? Okay.
Thank you.
Just one question. Has the lighting been installed yet? Any of it? It's not, it hasn't been activated, I know that outside light.
I think it has.
And it'll only be on during business hours, correct? Or it'll be on, and won't be on all night?
The parking lot lighting when it's installed.
No, no.
Is it dark sky lighting?
Yes.
Downward facing shielded elements.
Dark sky, yeah, dark sky, shielded.
Yes.
Any other discussion or any other comments from the public?
I would make a motion to approve modification to the plan as presented, with the condition that a plan for vegetative screening be prepared and submitted. There.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll second that one.
When you put it at the end of a sentence, I forgot. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that 60-foot would have never accommodated an all west parking. I just figured it out.
Okay, fair enough. It would have had to have been another 12 or 14 feet.
It would have needed another 20 feet.
All right, any...
Do we have more discussion?
You had one more comment from the...
All right, any, oh.
James Fuzik, you guys are all worried about headlights. What time does this facility plan on closing? Granted, it's winter time and headlights are on at 4, but what time for the rest of the year do you plan on closing? So we have to worry about headlights and, and, you know, things that people don't like.
Six to 9:30.
9:30 at night is when you close? And then the help leaves around 10?
Yeah.
No, it's called, um, Steph, sorry, can you shout out Director Buck recently? Those cars will be parked in that parking lot. They'll be going.
The parking lot you just put your finger on?
Behind us.
Behind that wall you guys just built, which is two feet, two and a half feet down from the existing plane? This is the first time I saw a map. What is that? Is that a roadway going on the north side of the 253 West Street? That big gray line in the middle? Yeah. What is that? Is that a roadway? Driveway?
And then there's another entrance over.
Yeah, the north end, I see that. This is the first time I saw a map, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then there's the two parking lots. So there's the one right behind...
I'm sorry, I was told to, I got a letter in the mail. I was told to be here for seven o'clock, so I feel like I'm a little late. But I checked it, it says seven.
Yeah, this was, this is an amendment to the original plan. So this is a, that is the original plan that was approved back, oh gosh, I don't know when. And so they were coming, they were coming back to discuss additional gravel lot, parking lot.
Okay, I'm just, just looking.
Thank you.
Hey, flip.
There's a sec, yeah, if you want to see that. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Curious, when do you anticipate opening?
To the public, January.
Nice.
We have a founding member opening on the 14th of December.
Great. Well, congrats. Came by with the building inspector and the assessor. It's very beautiful.
Oh, thanks.
So I have one more question for you guys. Is somebody there most of the time?
What, what do you mean by that?
Somebody at the facility most of the time, right now. So as a planning board member, I could pop in and see what's going on. Just, you know, to put some feet on the ground and eyeballs on the real thing instead of a picture, it'd be really beneficial to know, you know, to see what's going on. Because from the outside, it looks really large.
Matt Rex, he's the foreman.
Nothing further on our agenda, right?
Right.
There is some things.
No, we got...
But I'm just, excuse, I'm sorry, just for the purposes of the audio, if you don't mind moving into the hallway. Sorry. Thank you.
You all.
Thank you.
Wait five minutes, two minutes.
We'll give him one more minute.
Seem to recall, that was one of the things that they did between two parking lots on the north side of the Kendall Company lot in South Deerfield, when they built the back parking lot. They actually took some of the top soil and created a berm between the two lots, and then did some evergreens there. And it worked out really well, so.
Yeah. You know, and if you take a whole bunch of top soil, just as an aside, and build a berm out of it, it's going to be prime growing soil.
It's going to be loose.
It's going to be loose. It's going to have all those things to promote those, that site block from growing more quickly.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Sorry, excuse me. Excuse us, do you mind?
The door, please.
It's a public meeting, now get out, she said.
Yeah. No, we just, we just have audio that's picking up.
Finish some business, that's all. Thank you.
Kind of a nice fashion.
No, please don't close the door. No, we want to keep it open.
Thank you. See you later.
Okay.
Didn't get the message the first time. Like I said, we'd be more emphatic.
All right.
Hey, listen, I'm 75, I'm not afraid of, of that sort of stuff.
All right, all right. Last item.
There is something kind of exciting. The bylaw review committee...
What's that? Oh, like the town bylaw committee, sorry.
Yeah, the town, there's a committee that's reviewing all the town bylaws.
Not our zoning bylaws.
General bylaws, got it. Okay.
Correct. Yep, not the zoning bylaws, the general bylaws, which includes wetlands, but not zoning. They have decided to use a service called Ecode 360, which maybe you're familiar with.
Yep.
You're familiar with. A lot of other towns have their bylaws formatted by Ecode 360. They offer full bylaw restructuring, indexing, formatting, and they also offer legal review, all in a one package deal. They give you an assessment of cost based on the length. And so for them to do our general bylaws and zoning, it would be $13,000.
But that seems cheap.
Right. And so basically...
Is that, is that the assessment? Is that the full codification?
What?
Is that the assessment or the whole full codification?
Yeah.
That's doing the assessment and getting the bylaw into their system.
Exactly.
Huge.
13 grand.
Can we like support that? Can we?
Let me go on and I'll tell you.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, great.
Very exciting. So the formatting, they want to keep the formatting changes. The legal review will bring it up to the base, like make sure that we're not out of step with the state. They want to keep that separate from big substantive bylaw, I mean zoning changes, because it's easier for the public to parse. And so they will be doing that work over the course of 2026. And so 2027 ATM, they want to kind of reserve for the...
TM?
Annual town meeting.
Annual town meeting. They want to reserve for the formatting, like vote, for us to vote at annual town meeting on the formatting vote.
Amazing.
Which means, annual town meeting in 2026, we can make some substance changes to the zoning, which could include best systems, anything else that we can get worked in there. And then 2028, we can bring substance changes. 2026 will be for the format.
2027 will be for the format.
Sorry, yes. 2027 will be for the format. Does that make sense? It was a little confusing to me at first, but like the timeline, but, okay.
And are any substantive changes that we add next year be part of the review that we could then, for 2027?
I believe, yes. Because they're going to be doing all of that over the course of 2026. So if we adopt it, I think in May, they can look at that too.
Reviewing it all, including the new...
Right. And then from then on, what I'm not entirely sure of is like, when we adopt substantive changes in 2028 and ongoing, like how do we make sure that it's formatted correctly from then? Do they give us like the tools to do that? You know what I mean? But it's, it's also like, it's super searchable. Like you can click in one place and it will take you to another place.
All hyperlinks, all built in, yeah.
And it matches like all the other towns that have it. It's like the same format. So it's like you can look at Northampton's, you can look at ours.
W3C compliant, so it's searchable from Google, what have you.
You can send people like a link to the actual sentence.
Yes, you can.
It just, just goes straight to that part of the code.
Yeah. So that's a huge step forward. We're also, I think they're allocating funding for that separately from any other funding we may have for the zoning. So, I guess.
Do we need to like vote of, we approve? Like, does any like letter supported by us? Or is it already in the works?
I think it's in the works, but I'll...
That's happening. So the select board is running this?
The bylaw committee, I think, is making the recommendation to the select board to allocate funding for this project. And the number that they got, 13,000, includes zoning.
We don't know if that's... There should be a grant that you can get, whether it's a community compact grant to basically do the recodification and the digitization.
Modernization and digitization of code.
Yeah, municipal modernization, that kind of thing, yeah.
I agree. I don't know if Andrew was like looking into that or...
Yeah, speaking as a stingy taxpayer that doesn't want to pay anything more than we have to.
Totally, yeah.
The only thing I would say is before they codify, because it sounds like 2027 is, I'll describe it as recodification.
Yeah.
That's where you basically take the whole thing, without changing the words of the bylaw, you rearrange everything and put things into proper...
Right.
Outline format.
Sequential.
So big number one, then capital A, then small number one, and then lowercase a, and then Roman numeral one and down the line.
The only language they would be changing is if there's something that we have that's like directly in conflict with like the law.
Sure.
And they would abide on that. Yeah.
Do you think we would have an opportunity to do some of the block rearrangement in 2026 before they codify?
For the review.
Because a lot easier for us to cut and paste on our own document.
Right.
Before it goes into the system.
That's why I think like, the homework of reading what PVPC put together and coming back in December and trying to figure out what we bring to town meeting with this timeline in mind, I think might be a bulk of our conversation next time.
That sounds great. Yeah.
And maybe, I don't know, like you and you and maybe Andrew, we could meet and try to really nail down what the timeline looks like, because I'm not sure he has. And then maybe work in some of the things that PVPC has told us and try to figure out exactly when it's appropriate along the Ecode 360 like timeline. Because they have their own like very specific.
And if there's some letter or whatever that's needed for the select board or something as like an additional support, like we on board with that, me putting together some sort of letter that's like...
Okay, I'll find out if anything like that would be needed. Otherwise, this is a big part of our...
Moving ahead.
...actions we're moving forward on. So that's great.
Yep.
Okay. The, so maybe you've heard through different channels, the new, the flood insurance rate maps are now out for Hampshire County. There've been, there's great buzz about it. It basically means, interestingly, the maps have nothing to actually do with the cost of your insurance, really. It's because that's defined by private insurance companies. It's essentially a map of the extent of the flood plan, which has been redelinated.
And was larger.
It's definitely larger. And even if it's not larger in places, it's more that like what was a 500-year storm is now a 100-year storm. So Kyle and Andrew and I have been attending workshops and trainings. They, this all will tie into like our buildability assessment for the housing production plan, all kinds of things like this. It shows areas where property owners are mandated to buy federal flood insurance and where we're required to regulate development and how. And so there are aspects of our bylaw that we need to update. They, the laws for regulating the flood plan are split between the building code, the Board of Health code... the building code, the board of health code, our floodplain bylaw, and then the wetlands bylaw.
Sounds really easy.
Yeah, and so if there's things that are out of step, DCR and FEMA will tell us what they are, and we can change those things in our bylaw. We also have to designate a floodplain administrator, but if we, so the timeline that we're in now is there's a 90-day period where towns can submit what's called a letter of map change, and that's basically if there's been any like, large, like hydrologic or hydraulic change in the floodplain, which would include like a culvert or a dam or something like this that's been built since they've been doing the mapping, and there's a 90-day window for that, and then after that, they have to, here, they have to look at all of those applications, and that can take basically a year, because every town in Hampshire County can submit these. And they can't move forward until all of these have been considered, it's called the appeal period, and then after that, there's a six-month window called the compliance period where we have to adopt the new floodplain maps as a community, and we have to, we have to update our bylaw. So they're expecting 2027 is when we have to have all that done by, they kind of time it out with annual town meetings, because that's how everyone does everything, so it'll probably be the period for us to adopt the new maps, and the bylaw will be early 2027, and if we don't, for some reason, vote to adopt the new maps, then we're out of, we're suspended from the NFIP program, which means we don't get FEMA aid in a flood anymore. So that's the.
I mean, did they cut all the funding for that anyway? What good is it?
It would be who of us to do it correctly.
So we have a year to put a big drain in?
It goes under the river. It has to go under the river.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
The floodplain maps have to be adopted by a vote of town meeting?
Yes.
The bylaw that you're talking about, is it, it's a combination of both general bylaw as well as zoning bylaw?
Our floodplain bylaw is in the zoning bylaw.
It's in the zoning bylaw, so, and that has to be adopted at town meeting in 2027?
That's what they're expecting, yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be, and if the floodplain maps change significantly, and if we're required to limit certain development within those areas, there's a huge educational component to that, that we're going to have to start to think about quickly.
Yeah.
It's probably going to have to start the summer before, summer of 26.
People are not gonna, people are not going to understand what we're, what has to be done or what we're mandated to do.
Perception is always our biggest opponent.
Absolutely, you know, you know, what are you doing? I hear this, what, I hear this, what are you doing? I can't understand why you're doing all this, and so we're going to have to be prepared to educate the public, especially the public that's adjacent to these areas, on what's going on, and how we're trying to address the situation in a manner that keeps us kosher with the state, and also, also does the job here on site.
Yeah, and with the feds, yeah, because like, Town Business Center, I'm sure, is all on the floodplain.
Right.
And that's where we're like, Village Center, let's have commercial growth.
I'm hypo, hypothesizing, hypothesizing, that some of those restrictions might prevent someone from building a new structure, like a new accessory structure.
Yeah.
Suddenly you're telling people in certain areas, no, you can't build your own garage, you can't have a garage, you can't do anything else on your property.
Right.
Wow.
Well, but there, those people would be situated in existing floodplain, so if we're going to deny them because of that, then.
No, that's a federal, that's like the law.
Right, and, and what used to be like a V-zone, or what used to be outside of the V-zone may now be in a V-zone, a velocity zone, and that changes what's allowable in those areas.
Or they have to jump through more, or something that would be by right, they have to come, to do the planning board for.
Right. One of the, one of the things that does change is, in certain areas, you can't do underground fuel tanks.
Exactly.
So you can't have a buried propane tank, it's got to be above ground. Anyway.
Yeah, that's the takeaway. So.
We have to look at that.
Yeah, it affects everybody.
And people are going to be mad at us, but it's not our fault.
Yeah, can we get something from the federal government to present this to town meeting instead of us?
People are going to come back at us.
Yeah, I know. Or they're going to be like, not going to want to pass it at town meeting, and we'll be like, fine, when we have a flood, don't get.
Right, you know.
We're on our own.
Right, and I think that would be an important component, to make people understand that, that, you know, if we don't deal with this, you're sort of left out there dangling on your own, in case there's an incident, you have no protection from us, you have no protection from FEMA or anybody else, you're floating on your own, so to speak, if your house gets washed away.
Right, and the private insurance you'd be able to buy would be astronomically expensive.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, you see, you see what's going on in other states with, with weather insurance, so we'll call it weather insurance, I mean, 500% increases for homeowners in their bill, that's, you know, people would go crazy here, in this town, they would go absolutely out of their minds if their insurance went up 500%.
Well, yeah, especially if you weren't in the floodzone, and now you are considered in the floodzone.
Right, absolutely, and I mean, you built a house and you thought it was safe, and you weren't going to end up with any of these restrictions, and all of a sudden, your $3,000 a year in flood insurance goes up to $15,000 a year. And, and especially be egregious to people who think they live in a place that couldn't possibly flood in five lifetimes.
Like Kyle was saying, it's like we have Mill River flooding, we have flooding around the Oxbow, like it's not exactly where you would, we have a levee, it's like, it's not necessarily just significant.
So that's on the horizon.
But there has been an incidence of serious flooding in this town.
Is that a pun, a horizon water?
No, no. Unintended.
I can't remember when it was, but I lived at 10 Prospect Street when we first moved from town, this is 40 years ago at least, and there was a flood incident. The bridge at Prospect Street and Elm Street basically almost got washed out, the first house on the right coming up Prospect Street, the water was up to the house in those fields, and that was from the Mill River, not the Connecticut River, and then there was the incident when the dike failed.
Yeah, yep.
Do you have anything else, Bella?
I do sadly, yeah.
Okay.
We had a meeting with PVPC, Forest Mountain Conservation Area Forester, UMass Soil Scientist, Kestrel Land Trust to talk about our drinking water supply protection, and what constraints and strengths we have. The long story short is that all of this ties into, again, a buildability assessment for us with the age of our infrastructure, where we need to protect forest cover, how this affects basically how much capacity we can develop, and then I will skip forward to tell you that I applied, I sent in a, what's it called, expression of interest letter for a new grant called, it's a part of a new grant group called the ECO One Stop for Growth, which is basically a follow-up to the regular One Stop for Growth, it's for environment and climate-related projects.
In the state, state-based?
Yes, and Kyle Fennell recommended that we apply for the housing production plan, because the housing production plan really needs to be responsive to all of these things, it needs to respond to the floodplain, comprehensive plan, drinking water protection, the mapping updates that have come in, also, I think we're at a unique position to like, sequence the housing production with our zoning updates, and I think that's like a big, I mean, that's complex, and so we've applied, basically as a follow-up to having an MVP-funded comprehensive plan, we argued that the housing production plan is responsive to like, climate constraints, and that half field is like uniquely limited by many different types of climate and
Environmental constraints.
Yeah, and so we asked for 50,000, we'll hear back from them about what aspects of our application we could strengthen, we didn't set the application, it's an expression of interest, so they'll let us know like what our application can contain, and hopefully we can get some help with that.
And then what is the, what is the deadline, or when we'll be here back from?
I think it's opening, early next year.
Okay.
Yeah, we were ahead of, we came on that.
Great.
Yeah. I don't want to keep you any longer, that's good for now.
Please gotta go to bed after drinking that Monster.
Understand, yeah.
You're surprised.
Sleep, is that it? Come right to sleep.
Sugar and caffeine makes me tired.
Cool. Thank you for all that work.
Yeah, really.
Really thank you. It's great to have you on board, I really appreciate that, yeah.
I was just going to say the same thing, the, the extra input that you've put into this board has been amazing.
That is so nice, thank you.
And it really makes our job a little easier, and it makes the information a lot clearer. So we really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you for having me, it's been a real joy, I'm living it.
Is that sarcastic?
Such a joy, no, truly, yeah, I love it.
At the risk of belaboring, meeting is probably longer than it needs to be, I'll try to keep this to about 30 seconds, I would encourage us all to think about what we want our zoning to do, what we want our zoning bylaw to do, there's a lot of moving parts in town, I don't want those other moving parts to settle into a place where now any changes we consider the zoning bylaw are essentially funneled in one direction, and that may not be a direction that any given one of us may prefer, so I think that basically means we need to get in front of it, at least in concept, at least have some conversations about what we'd like to see, how we'd like to see development proceed, and at least lay that down and have that, have folks be aware of that, as they're developing other things, such as conservation of land, restriction on uses of land that's in a floodzone, what have you, we need to sort of understand.
Lastly, we want people to feel like as they're being blindsided
Yes.
by any of these regulations, and, hey, I have the, I have the right to do this.